The October 13th, 2022 City of Friendswood Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting is now called to order. We will begin by receiving communication from the public. There is no one from the public here this evening, so we will skip to the next agenda item. Next is our Consent Agenda. These items are considered routine or ministerial in nature and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of items unless a Commissioner so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and considered separately. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting held Thursday, September 22nd, 2022, and the final plat of Mandel Estate?
This'll move. Second?
We have a motion and a second, all in favor. The motion passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is a discussion item regarding the City of Friendswood Comprehensive Plan. Aubrey, do you have a presentation to understand?
Yes, sir. So, just a little bit of background. The Subcommittee worked in 2021 to update the future land use map, which is a piece of the Comprehensive Plan. And then, this year, the plan was to continue working on the written portion of the plan and update it. There's a little bit of a delay. The Census, like, didn't get their information out for the 2020 Census till, like, halfway through this year. So, they're starting to, all their information's pretty much out now, so I've been going through and updating. So, that's pretty much the update tonight, is just the update on all of our numbers. So, we'll go through that. The Subcommittee has not met, so this is the first time of them seeing this update, as well as the rest of the Commission. But, and I gave the presentation to City Council at their meeting, I think, beginning of October. It's non-conclusive, it's just updates on numbers. The Subcommittee will meet, and I actually have a lot more writing to do. I think our new comp plan's up to, like, 41 pages, and still a lot more to do. So, we're getting there. So, the, can you go to the next one? So, the Comprehensive, when we did the future land use map, basically, we concluded that as of December 2021, we have 1,884 acres that are undeveloped. 62% of that is zoned single-family residential, 25% is zoned downtown or planned unit development, 4.5% is business park or OPD, and 14% is CSC or neighborhood commercial, and 18% is light industrial or industrial. And of course, this is changing rapidly as we have property developed.
Aubrey, is there a preference, as if anybody has any questions as we go through this? Is it easier just to, to when the slide's up there, or is it easier for you, for us to wait to the end?
You can just ask your questions whenever.
Okay.
That way, we have the information in front of us.
So, with that entry, what, do you have a sense of how much land is already developed? What percentage of Friendswood is this actually being undeveloped? Do you have a feel? I should have warned you in advance, I'm sorry.
Total acreage, so 1,884 divided by total acreage, is that?
Right, yeah, just kind of seeing, you know, I mean, I think we're mostly all built out, and I'm just trying to figure out how much we're mostly all built out.
So, we are 20.9 square miles.
Which is some arbitrary number of acres, I understand.
Section is one square mile, so 630 square feet, right?
No.
I'm not that good at math.
Square feet.
Square miles.
630 acres, excuse me, 630 acres in a square mile.
43,560.
So, we have 21 square miles times 630 acres.
43,560 is acres in, or square feet in an acre. But I don't know the difference.
Yeah, it's 249.
So, that would be 13,000. So. 13,000, so it's about 90% or 85% developed.
43,560.
560.
I should have taken this offline.
My guess is you're close, somewhere in the 90%.
Yeah, yeah. If, if your number was right, it's 13,000 total.
630 acres per square mile, and you have 21 square miles, so.
Yeah.
21 times 630, 13,230.
Right, and that's his 1,800, so that's about 15% of that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so it's 85% rougher, my mistake, that's fine, thank you.
Okay.
That kind of feels right also.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. I made all the fonts bigger on the presentation from your last comments, so.
Oh, you've improved the font?
I made them bigger, but they still don't look real big.
Yeah, they could go even larger, but okay.
They're readable for someone.
They are.
So, our new 2020 population is 41,213, which is a 15% increase from 2010. Historically, our largest population increases have been a result of annexations, and we haven't had annexations in a lot of years. Comparisons to adjacent cities are included in the Comprehensive Plan. They differ a lot in population, but we're similar in a lot in some areas. So, we will compare ourselves to all the cities that touch our borders, so Pearland, League City, and Alvin. Pearland's at a population of 1,25,828, League City's at 114,392, and Alvin's at 27,098. Can you go to the next slide? So, age distribution, our male and female ratios are consistently increasing and proportionate. Our biggest increase was ages 6 to 17, which is good for the school district. So, that increase was from 7,986 to 11,004. And then, our over 65 population continues to increase from 4,198 to 5,893. That's a 14.3% increase for this census. Historically, 1980, there was a 4.2% increase, 1990 was a 5.7 increase, 2000 was 8.6%, and 2010 was 11.7%. Our median age is also increasing, we're at 41.4, which is up a little bit from 40.2 in 2010.
I mean, there could be a lot of reasons, but it sounds like people are coming to Friendswood or staying, raise their families and stay.
Yeah, so that, I mean, those, the age affects our housing, and, you know, that we, our housing needs and our economy, because those people retire, you know, and don't pay as much property tax and things like that, so it definitely affects.
We have heard that from the developers that have come in talking about people wanting smaller yards, not doing the maintenance and that sort of thing.
Next is income. Our median income is 108,135. That's up from 99,780 in 2010. We are comparable to League City and Pearland in that number. Our median value of housing, we topped the charts on this one, median value is 300,100. You can kind of see Pearland and League City are, like, follow us, I don't have those exact numbers written down, but there's also Galveston County, Harris County, and the state of Texas are on there, as well as the city of Alvin. The Census has a new category that they're tracking, it's households with computer and internet service. So, for Friendswood, we have 97.7% of the households have a computer, and 96.1% of them have broadband internet subscriptions, compared to the state at 92.7, computers and 85.1 have internet service.
Aubrey, do you know if those housing numbers are the tax appraisal value? Or is that something different?
Um.
They probably don't tell you on the.
I would assume it would have to be the tax appraisal.
Yeah, okay, and that sometimes is not quite the same as what things are actually selling for.
Yeah.
But it's consistent along, among the cities, so it's a good comparison.
Yeah, they're all compared evenly.
On the same basis, right, yep.
The next housing category is, like, expenses. So, the median gross rent, so this is expenses that owner, renters or owners pay to either rent or own a property. So, we're number two to Pearland as far as rentals, rental cost. And then, median selected owner costs, so owners without a mortgage, it's $899 per month, and with a mortgage, it's 2,363. These costs include mortgages, taxes, insurance, and utilities. The total workforce, we have 20,499 citizens in the workforce, 75% of those are white-collar, 15% are blue-collar, and 10% are services. Unemployment, we have 2,070, which is about 10% of the labor force that's unemployed. Economy, these numbers are from 2017. I think our economy has actually changed quite a bit in the last five years or so, so curious to see, you know, how these numbers change in the future. But, right now, we're the lowest in all the categories except for healthcare and social assistance, we're number three. It's kind of hard to tell, like I said, the, because the numbers are so different, but the top category is retail sales, like, per capita, and Alvin is rocking that category. For their population, their retail sales are impressive. Pearland and League City are pretty much consistent across the board. Education is the next category. Friendswood, Pearland, and League City are all pretty much comparable. So, high school graduates are about 95, 96%, bachelor's degrees about 48, 49% compared to Galveston County at 89.6, high school and 32.1 bachelor's, Harris County at 81.8 high school and 32.3 bachelor's, and then the state of Texas is at 84.4 and 30.7. The next one is, I just kind of took the liberty of, I was curious what we, how we compared other cities in the state of Texas that are of more similar size, as far as population and maybe a couple of the other metrics. So, the city of Hurst, Texas, Shirts, and Capel seem to be, like, the most comparable as far as median values and education. Of course, geography and regional influences and resources, you know, affect these numbers Are, they're small and I can't read those, but, let's see. So, like, the median values for homes for Hurst, Texas, are 209, for Shirts are 223, Friendswood's at 300,000, and then Capel is at 414,000. Our populations are all pretty similar. Median household incomes varied pretty significantly, so 64,000, 84,000, 108, and then 128. In staff meeting the next morning when we were going over this, somebody asked what the, our tax rates were, so we looked those up, so just for grins, and, like I said, size also. So, Hurst, well, Friendswood is 20.9 square miles, Hurst is 9.97, Shirts is 32.27, and Capel is 14.73. So, they're all, they're pretty varied. And then, we are the lowest tax rate at .4873, Shirts is the next one at .4950, Capel is .5187, and Hurst is .61.
Interesting, thank you.
That's pretty much all of the.
So, the thing that stands out to me here is that we have so, the thing that we're really different on is retail sales.
Yeah.
Were you able to compare 2017 for all four of those? I noticed you called that out, and were you, I'm impressed that you could get the credit for the, get the other cities in the same year. I didn't know if they had a difference in the year comparisons.
Yeah, no, it's all the same.
Okay.
It's all the same year.
On the same basis, yeah.
Yeah.
So, this emphasizes that we are truly a bedroom community with very little commercial. It's impressive that we have a lower tax rate when we still get such low commercial tax at the same time. That, that gives you confidence in the efficiency of how well this is governed, and people in this room are part of that. Not up here, by the way. So, okay, thank you.
So, what, sorry, keep, keep going, sorry.
Well, that's kind of the end of the census and, like, numbers. Are there any questions on any of that?
Not, not, not on the, what you presented.
I do, I do have one question. Before, it was referring to a Bachelor's of Science degree, and then here it says a Bachelor's degree. 69.5% seems like a lot, is that Bachelor's of Science also, or is that just any Bachelor's degree?
There, there any Bachelor's degree.
So, before, when it was saying BS, it was, that's any, that's not necessarily.
Yeah.
It's a college degree, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Because I thought that was very specific to maybe, like, engineering STEM, they're trying to point that out, but.
No, it's just high school and college, basically.
Okay, okay.
All right, so the next, or the, one of the other categories in our Comprehensive Plan is community facilities, that's one of the minimum requirements of the plan. So, kind of did a, an inventory of our buildings, so we have City Hall, we have the Senior Activity Building, we have Public Safety Building, we have Animal Control, the Blackhawk Facility, and the Library. I think a lot of, we have a few projects that are underway. City Hall is what it is, I mean, we, we keep reconfiguring interior space, but it's sufficient for its needs. The Library, we added 5,596 square feet to that in 2014, so their total right now is at 26,726 square feet. They're in the process of doing, like, updating their future plans. The two things they identified in their plan that they want or need is their mobile unit, which I think they've raised the money to purchase a mobile unit, they just haven't done it yet, and then also just capitalizing on, like, maker's space for creativeness and things like that, I guess, it's kind of the trend right now. So, those are the only two things they identified. The Senior Activity Building is probably the, the building remaining that either needs to be improved or replaced. Animal Control was replaced in 2013 with bond money. And then, Blackhawk, Public Safety Building is being added on to right now, the Phase Two that was planned, and Blackhawk has three phases planned for that one, four-phase, I'm sorry, actually, the next screen, I jumped ahead of myself. So, Blackhawk has a four-phase, four-phase plan, they're going to improve their office area, and then their shop area and site, and then the public works area, and then the last will be the emergency shelter. PSB's, Phase Two's going on right now, and then Fire Station Two, the demo and rebuild, that facility will include three bays and a training facility. And to follow up on fire stations, we have sufficient fire stations, so this map actually shows the four stations and the radius of each, which the orange is 1.5 miles and the yellow is two, two-mile radius from each station. So, the city is adequately covered for its uses. We have three vacant tracks, we have about 25 acres off of 528, that was a subdivision that went defunct, so we have that.
Is that accessible by road, current roads, or is it landlocked?
There's an access easement to it right now. It is close to the Harbor Church.
Right.
Kind of behind Fire Station Two. But it's got access easements, but if we ever develop it, we'll need to improve the access to it.
It wouldn't come off 528, it would come off Lundie Lane?
The current access is off of 528.
Oh, there is a direct line, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. But it's off the road quite a bit.
Yeah, that triangle is the detention pond that was dug for that subdivision, it was called the Estates. And it was dug like that because there's pipelines going through there, and, yeah.
That's SCC or Harbor on the bottom, right?
Yeah.
I mentioned both at the time.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, the, the Harbor Church owns the vacant piece to the left, and then all the acreage down at the bottom as well.
And there are no plans for this?
No, no, not right now. The other two tracks that we own are in the downtown district, 109 East Willowick and 408 Morningside Drive, where the library and public safety buildings used to be. So, no plans for those at this time either. There has been talk about rebuilding.
It's the old police station.
Oh, 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 the old police station, okay, I got you, yep, yep, yep.
Because the old library's still there, it's just now called the Activity Center.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. They've been gone since I've been here, so.
We've never done anything after we removed that police station, right?
Right.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense.
Yeah.
A lot of concrete.
So, that's all for the updates. Studies still pending or in process, the Parks Master Plan, Drainage Master Plan, and the Utility Master Plan. The water side of the Utility Master Plan is actually pretty much complete, and actually, after I gave this presentation at the last council meeting, our Garver gave the update on the Water Master Plan. So, if you would like to go look at that, you can. Basically, they're kind of getting a plan together on, like, what ground storage tanks need to be replaced, new trunk lines that need to be installed to improve our water system, just so we can plan for those things.
So, Aubrey, these, these three master plans are part of the Comprehensive Plan. Is there dates for when, what the goals are for updating these?
Um.
Has anybody agreed to a date?
Parks Master Plan, I thought would have already been done, like, I think we started that during COVID, and they said, oh, it'll be done in six months, and I think it's two years later.
Yeah.
So, I need, I'll follow up with them and find out.
Is that a James Tony thing? Is that?
Yeah.
Parks is doing that.
Uh-huh, yeah. And then, like I said, water's done, I think they're starting sewer next, and drainage, I don't know that there will necessarily be a master plan, I think we could probably cover, like, the flood improvement projects that are being done.
Who does the drainage master plan? Who, is that the city, is that the Drainage District?
Uh, it would be engineering that would oversee that, and I, they might, right now, the Comprehensive Plan basically just identifies the creeks and the watersheds, and like I said, I think we could include the information on our flood improvement projects and maybe some ideas that are slated for future projects as well, and I think that would be sufficient.
Okay. So, the, I won't say the big one, that's, that would be wrong, I think, but, so these are all in some form of updating, is there, is there currently, and we're going to get to this at the end, but is there a current, just talking about dates, is there a current thought of when we, we are targeting to be done with the Comprehensive Plan?
I'd originally hoped by the end of the year, with the little bit of delay with the census, I'm thinking, I'm hoping first quarter of next year.
Okay, next year?
Yeah.
And so, these all have to be updated to some degree by, by that time?
Yeah, yeah, if we, of course, this, my calendar is filling up quickly by the end of the year.
But these are not only next, these are it?
Yeah, yeah, this would be the minimum requirements.
Okay.
And then, like, all the other plans, like Downtown Improvement Plan, like, we were going to reference those plans, but the only thing we have to include in the Comprehensive Plan is the, like, transportation, which, we're not touching that chapter, we updated that in 17. So, major thoroughfare plan, land use, community facilities, and utilities, I think, are the main.
And for those that weren't on the Commissioner or didn't know, I mean, when you talk about how we're doing the minimum requirements, because this was originally thought that we would outsource this, and other cities do, at a quite a large cost, so Aubrey and the team have been doing this internally with our own resources, that's why it's taking a little bit longer maybe, because they have all their day jobs to work on as well, but it's at a tremendously less, lower cost by doing it ourselves. So, well done.
Yes, it goes back to how we somehow have lower costs and less revenue, and just for things like this, so, well done.
Yeah.
Thank you. So, that's the end of the presentation, like I said, we'll use this data collected, the Subcommittee will get together again, we'll review, you know, this information, and, like I said, just review our goals and make sure they're still applicable, if we can, you know, if there's anything glaring or, you know, new that we can add.
We could update the timeline, we've gotten some of those things done already, we just need to get another meeting, and then we can update that. And, and the drain, the GCCDD is real interested, so, once we meet again, we can talk offline, but that, that I want to give them some information as well.
Okay, great.
And is, is this a topic, or can, should this be a topic, or is this already a topic for our annual workshop, to kind of talk through what needs to get done to, to wrap this up? For, not, not in general, but for the Commission, what does the Commission, what does the Subcommittee need to do, that sort of thing?
We could review the timeline for it in, at the retreat.
And here's what the Commission needs to help on?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Yeah, I assume that, just double checking. Any, any questions or comments from Commissioners? Yeah.
Nice job.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for the update.
Thank you.
The census stuff is really interesting. The population graph that I saw when I just put my paper up to it, it looks like we'll hit about 50,000, not in 2030, but in 2040, is, if the line keeps going as straight as it has for the last 30 years.
Yeah, it, yeah, if we hit it.
And that comes down to the 15% less, so we might be curving over a little bit, and so we'll see.
Yeah, which we could do those projections, actually, I, I have some scribblies, because we have 62%, I have the acreage of single-family that's left, that we could, so we could project a population with our acreage that we have left. But downtown district's going to have a little bit of residential in there.
Right.
The planned unit developments might have a little bit of residential, so it's still a guess, but.
It's a guess.
Yeah.
Now, I just looked at the graph and said, it looks pretty straight the last 40 years or 30 years?
Yeah.
So, if you extrapolate that out, you don't get there in 2030, but you do get there in 2040.
But that would probably be the earliest, because my suspicion would be as it gets less and less and smaller and smaller percentage of people, of places left, it won't be, won't be big, big subdivisions, it'll be small bits and pieces of.
Yeah, that's maybe.
Yeah, we're not going to have any more west ranches.
Right.
So.
Okay, great, thank you, thanks for the update. Next is Communication, and we will start with announcing that the next two Planning and Zoning Commission meeting dates have been scheduled for Thursday, October 27th, and Thursday, November 10th. Continuing our communication with any comments from our Commissioners, I'll start with you, Marcus.
Nothing.
Travis?
At the Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District meeting, for the most part, they were just discussing multiple projects that they're doing to reduce our flood, all the flood mitigation, but mainly to take the pressure off of Clear Creek, that's where they're really seeing it, and that's coming off of Coward and Chigger, and so they're really working on those things, and they've got a bunch of projects going on, terrorizing, clearing stuff out, detention ponds, and then there's a inter-local agreement with the city that they're working through, they're, they're very interested in our Comprehensive Plan to see how all this is going to tie together, but they're, they're doing a ton of great work, which I thought was awesome. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Assassin?
I have nothing.
Ryan?
I have nothing.
Nothing else from me as well. We have no representation from City Council here this evening, so we'll go to Aubrey, anything else?
Yeah, we had no DRC meetings in September 2022, so there was nothing in your back-up material for that. And then, we are all set for the November 29th retreat. Everybody responded and said they could be there, cater is booked, and the library's booked, so we're good to go.
Great, thank you, thank you, Karen?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, thanks everyone, and now the October 13th, 2022 Planning, no, Planning and Zoning Regular Meeting is now adjourned.